Okay, we'll call the January 20th, January 12th, 2021 meeting to order. I believe Kelly's on and I believe Teresa's on and Supervisor Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis, County Auditor Lisa Grabbert, and Luanne Goke are in the room, and myself, Jack Willie, and we'll proceed. Roger Stewart, Chairman of the Revolving Loan Committee, and Matt Speck from ECIA are here to discuss a recommendation or a request from MKC. So I don't know who wants to start, Roger, if it's you or if it's Matt.
I'll start just very, and preface this meeting. Give you a little background. We did have a previous meeting with Wes and Jesse discussing this request. And I want to make it clear that we, we did not recommend this request. We found it to be a difficult request, but we wanted to bring it to the supervisors for further discussion. So just to make it clear, this is not a request that was approved, but we wanted to make sure that it had a good hearing.
Thank you, Roger.
Matt, you have something?
You hear me fine?
Now we can hear you, Matt.
Okay. Just to give you just a little bit of a background on this. So about a year and a half ago, the Jackson County RLF Board and then Supervisors approved a $400,000 revolving loan to PMW. At that time, we took a first security interest in the equipment because we knew Jesse and Wes were working on doing some refinancing with the Rural Vitality and would need the real estate at that time for collateral. Recently, they have gotten the, the, I guess, financing lined up to take out Rural Vitality between a bank, TBK Bank, the SBA, and then the Rural Vitality Fund. They're asking us, and I say us, they're asking Jackson County to subordinate their first UCC position on the equipment to this TBK Bank and the Rural Vitality Fund.
Okay, maybe Wes, you could, or Jesse, you can give us a little history on the original investment by Rural Vitality Fund, which is a arm of Farm Bureau. It's a, something that Farm Bureau initiated, but it's run separately. Maybe you could tell us a little bit about the original investment. I believe it was, it's, maybe you should mention it if you want to. It's up to you.
Rural Vitality Fund in 2008 invested a million three in MKC. And again, MKC is the holding company for Precision Metal Works and then a limited partnership for the real estate. And the plan over time was that the investment was to keep jobs in small towns such as Macau, where often the employees would be associated with agriculture in the area. And this private equity fund was set up to do and has been performing for over 12 years on, on this fund. They have wanted to exit at this point in time and so we look for, for funding and we're working with TBK Bank in the Quad Cities or on an SBA loan that's been approved for 1.3 million. And then the, our Rural Vitality Fund will essentially finance 700,000 for a total of $2 million, $2 million we would be responsible for buying approximately two-thirds of the shares in the company that they currently own. So that's the, the broad picture. Again, the SBA loan has been approved. Rural Vitality Fund has approved their, their loan condition on them being in a leading position. And when we, when we got the loan that Roger had mentioned in a year and a half ago for 400,000, that was to purchase a a long-term loan that was at a higher interest rate. And so we're getting it down to a lower interest rate. And we didn't anticipate that there'd be any problem in ECIA allowing us to go ahead with, with the work to get these other loans in place. So anything you wanted to add, Jesse? We've been working on this for a couple of years and it looks like it's getting close to being wrapped up.
Let me, okay. Let me be clear. If in fact you get the loan from the bank, the TBK Bank, the Rural Vitality Fund would get their $1,300,000 investment back. They would get it back. But the request from the Rural Vitality Fund is to ask the revolving loan fund to fall in behind the $700,000 return that they're requesting at this time. So in fact, the, we as a revolving loan fund would be behind approximately $2 million. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
I got a question. Okay, I got a question as far as, so the two-thirds share that you're looking to buy out is owned by MKC, correct?
PMW, really, at this point.
Okay, so, and PBK Bank is not willing to basically pay us off with the remainder of the balance and take a first mortgage on the equipment that we have? They're not willing to do that?
Mike, this is, this is Steve Kaler. I'm the attorney for MKC. And to just kind of clarify who, who holds what, Jesse individually holds about 850,000 shares of common stock in MKC, Inc. And the Rural Vitality Fund has 2 million shares of Series A and Series B preferred stock in MKC. So the, the buyout would be MKC basically redeeming the 2 million shares of preferred stock from the Rural Vitality Fund. And MKC itself would be holding that stock not issued to or outstanding. If that helps you.
Let me ask one further question. Thanks, Steve. Is the Rural Vitality Fund adamant in this request? Do they have any wiggle room or are they just absolutely? And are they just absolutely not willing to talk further?
If you're addressing that to me, Roger, it's my understanding that Rural Vitality Fund has taken the position if they aren't allowed to be a second lien to the SBA, their position is they're looking for someone else to purchase their interest in MKC. And Jesse, Jesse and Wes may be able to speak to that.
That's, that's what they've indicated to me and to Jesse.
So what you're saying, though, is that it, the, the company would not go away due to have a new buyer. Is that correct?
Well, the concern is we don't know who that buyer might be and they might decide to move the business.
Sure.
And that's one of the things that Rural Vitality Fund, over the years, we've talked to interested parties on buying or investing in the company. And they rejected at least two that I know of, a Canadian company and one other company because they didn't feel confident that they'd keep them here in Macau and as being part of the Iowa Farm Bureau, they're, they want to maintain jobs in, in small communities in Iowa.
Well, after talking with, after talking with Roger and talking with
Matt.
I guess my concern is that with the $2 million ahead of our revolving loan fund, and I'm happy to hear when I talked to Matt, they said you are current with your payments to the revolving loan fund. So that's a positive, but there's really no collateral for the board with the three and a half million, or the $350,000 that's left to your loan. And we're just wondering, Roger talked about possibly a life insurance policy and value in a home. And then we also were told that was, there was some talk about maybe paying off $100,000 of the revolving loan fund upfront. I guess our concern is with no collateral for our $350,000, we have some concerns about that.
My comments would be not being in the financial business, but we have a really good revolving loan board. So I'm looking more of a recommendation from my board to say, you know, it sounds, I mean, just hearing this, it sounds fairly risky, risky to the county to really be the third-party collateral on anything, but I guess I'm looking for a recommendation, Roger. I don't know if the board is willing to do that, but.
Well, he basically said earlier that they, they weren't going to recommend the loan to us and presented.
It's a difficult position for us, too.
Yeah, it is. We've always appreciated the efforts that the revolving loan fund committee, a representative from all the different banks in Jackson County, to guide us because none of us in this room are financial experts. So we need their expertise in, in making recommendations to us. So it puts us in a precarious situation when they're saying, we're not going to make a recommendation either for or against this proposal. And so that makes it rather difficult for us to come to some kind of a conclusion.
Well, may I add at this point, we find it, we found it very difficult in the, in the loan committee. I mean, there's several of us met that day, found it very difficult. We'd like to find a way to help MKC, PMW. But we didn't make a recommendation either way that day. We didn't say, no, we can't, we don't agree with this request. We didn't say, yes, we would. That's why we're here this morning for further discussion on this. And we were, we were just hoping there was some other alternative, alternative rather than have a loan that is probably not secured. Let me ask Wes and Jesse one other question in regard to a $2 million loan or the 700,000 that the Rural Vitality Fund wants as return. Do, what's the payments on that? What, what kind of payments are you expecting? And would you be able to service a $2 million loan plus a $350,000 loan?
Yes, we went through the the projections on that. And when Rural Vitality Fund made their investment in 2008, MKC had loans in this same neighborhood and even higher amounts of balances on, on their loans and paid those off over the years. So they, again, they were higher interest, you know, more than doubled the interest that we currently have. And so the, the actual servicing costs looked to be manageable during any downturn, any anticipated downturns in the economy or, or would perform well if the economy was, was healthy.
In regard to the Rural Vitality investment, has, when that investment was made of 1,300,000 back in 2000?
Now we're, Roger's muted.
I didn't, I don't, I didn't mute Roger.
We're not hearing you, Roger.
He must have done it himself. So you're saying he's booted?
No, you're not back.
Nope.
How about that?
Yeah, now you're on.
Okay. My question was, and I don't, maybe you heard part of it, was when Rural Vitality made the investment back in 2008 of a million three, has anything been paid on that over the period of time from 2008 until the present? Or was it just interest or anything paid on that?
Nothing has been repaid on that.
Then they're asking for that $1.3 million back. So that's why you went through the bank to, to find somebody to secure that loan?
Yes.
How many years would the new note be?
10 years.
10? I see that Sarah is on. Do you have any comments or recommendations, Sarah, or?
I don't, I don't have any recommendations. I will say that I did, I mean, obviously, the revolving loan fund allows for renegotiation of loans, which I, I think that's what this is, is that they're asking to negotiate and put our security interest third in line. So, I mean, legally speaking, it can be done. It's just a matter of what the board wants to do. Obviously, one of the issues is the revolving loan fund isn't, I, I think we were talking, is it even at a million yet? So if something happens and that 350 doesn't get repaid, that limits our ability to help other businesses. So from the county's perspective, that's certainly the concern is without security, you know, is there a large chunk of our, our lending ability? We may not be able to have until that's paid back.
And I think that's what's on the back of all of our minds is that that doesn't get paid back. We have less to help others.
If I could comment, I don't believe we discussed that in 2008, the company needed to buy a laser to be competitive. And after Rural Vitality Fund made their investment, we went to ECIA and got a $400,000 loan to purchase a laser. And I believe Matt can indicate that we serviced that loan adequately. And then I believe before that, there'd been ECIA financing perhaps that, that we've serviced. And so our record, and that was during the, you know, Great Recession that occurred right after we got the $1,000 loan and still were, were able to service that adequately. So
But at least, at least at that point, we had, we were first in line if anything happened for collateral. This removes us down to below $2 million in debt. So I, I mean, it's a, it's a, I want to keep 30 jobs here. That's important to the community and to our citizens. But I just am really concerned about the lack of the collateral for that. There's a way that we could restructure the loan or if we could visit it and see what kind of collateral we could come up with. We would need some assurance that there is something backing our loan.
I think the personal guarantee has been submitted, hasn't it, Matt?
I did not see the personal guarantee. The personal guarantee is from Wes and Jesse, is that the case? Or from who?
It was from Jesse and it went to the committee. Sorry, it didn't go to the supervisors, but it went to the Jackson County Revolving Loan Committee, did see it.
Was, Matt, was that the, the life insurance and the residence? That you're talking, you did talk to me about that. And you were guessing that was somewhere in the neighborhood of 125, 250,000?
Probably about 125,000 in equity would be my guess.
Did you mention, talk about $100,000 payment to the revolving loan fund or?
Well, that was, Roger said something about that when we were talking about possibly they would pay down that loan by 100,000. But I, there's been no discussion on that this morning. So maybe that's not a possibility, I don't know.
I just wanted to make sure that that we have the right characterization of what had occurred with the Rural Vitality Fund to begin with. You know, when they came in in 2008, they weren't making a loan, they were making an investment. And they invested funds and in return took a capital position in the company, which is the 2 million shares of preferred stock that are being purchased out under this proposal. So I just, I didn't want it to sound like, hey, RVF came in and they made some kind of loan and they never got any repayment. They made a capital infusion into the business and took an ownership position in the business, so.
Thank you for clarification.
So Steve, with that being said, when, when they took $2 million of preferred stock, what is the value of a preferred stock? Is basically the value of the business, am I correct, in that sense?
But I think you're, I think you're correct in the manner of, you know, your, your stock is related, Mike, to what your business valuation is. Their, their preferred stock gave them certain rights that common stock did not have, is why it was preferred stock. And I don't, I think you would find it wasn't a dollar for dollar issuance of a preferred stock, you know, the 2 million. But, but they had, they had certain voting rights that common stockholders didn't.
Let me, let me ask you this, Steve. Have you ever had conversation with Rural Vitality? I imagine you have.
My, my, my contact with Rural Vitality Fund has been with Mark Wickham, who is an attorney out of West Des Moines that represents Rural Vitality Fund.
Would that have anything to do with this request?
I'm not sure if I'm following your question, but he has represented Rural Vitality Fund throughout these negotiations with TBK, SBA, and my client. And I have been involved on behalf of the MKC body of, of companies in that negotiation.
So, so you haven't talked to him about this request, though? The request for the?
We have, I have had, I have had communication with Mr. Wickham with regard to RVF's position on the subordination. Is that what you're asking me?
I'm asking you exactly that. I guess the subordination, it's a big issue here. I, I just want to go back again and say that the committee of bankers that met in regard to this did not come to a conclusion here. We did not come to a conclusion. And as I said before, we didn't make a recommendation, nor did we turn this down. And that's why, exactly why we're here today to talk about this. And I just want to make sure all the facts are on the table. Everybody knew what the positions were in regard to the security and the fact that this is a, a company that has been good in Macau. And it's a dilemma that I'm not sure how to solve.
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, Rog, my, my communications with Mr. Wickham last were immediately prior to the appearance of Wes and Jesse and myself in front of your loan committee. And, you know, at that time, as I discussed with you folks, they were, RVF was asking for the subordination. Mr. Wickham has drafted the subordination. I mean, that was their position. They were, they were looking for the revolving loan fund to take a junior position behind SBA and RVF to get the deal done.
You talked about a, a payment. I, I think the revolving loan fund talks about 250,000 is typically your cap on, on loans.
We've done, we've done higher than that.
I have a question. I just, some basic math here on the revolving loan fund for us. We paid, you paid off $50,000, which is about 3,000 a month. It comes to about 36,000 per year. The 1.3 would be close to another 156,000, which would give you a monthly payment of about $16,000 for 10 years without touching the 700,000. Is that a workable number? I don't know what your gross receipts are. What, what, do you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, we've gone through the numbers and as I indicated, they work, work better than the debt that MKC had in 2008.
What's our timeframe here?
We're, the SBA loan is set to expire, the one that we've been approved for, on the 15th of January. So I, I would like to come up with something that I go to through the Rural Vitality Fund General Manager and if they'd be willing to, to compromise on, on some way of giving you the security that you feel you to compromise on, on some way of giving you the security that you feel you need yours for as much as I can.
Due respect, we haven't had a lot of conversation on this, of course, other than right here, right now. Like again, it's, it's been a tough decision for our revolving loan board. It's also a very tough decision for this board to have a decision in three days, or two days, or today. I don't know if that's reasonable, but I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
I, I guess one of the key things would be if the, if the Rural Vitality Fund would discuss it and come up with some type of a, you know, I, I just, I just feel very uncomfortable not having any collateral for our 350,000. And falling behind the 2 million, I just don't see that there's anything there for us. Would you be willing to talk to them and see if they could come up with something and get back to us? We could, you know, we can always call a special meeting if we need to do that to make a decision. But I don't think that the board at this point in time is ready to make a decision today without some additional information.
Well, would, I think 100,000 was mentioned with, if they would would you feel comfortable proceeding?
A lot more comfortable than I do right now.
150 would be better. 350 would be better. I mean, I'm not joking about the situation.
No.
It's, it's uncomfortable for us and our board, apparently. It's been stated that it's a tough decision and there's a reason for that. As I can see, I don't know, like I said, what Jack said, if, if the Rural Vitality is willing to take on our portion of that, or SBK, PBK. PBK would be willing to take on our portion and take our collateral position also.
Yeah, if they wanted to buy us out, the 350,000, we'd be thrilled and you could move forward. But I mean, that's something you're going to have to work out and get back to us and let us know what, what amount they might be willing to contribute to or pay off some of your revolving loan fund. All you have to do is let us know and we'll call, we have to have 24-hour notice. We can call a special meeting later this week.
I think, Jack, our, the, the question on behalf of my client would be, you know, is there a number that, that your board would agree to so that we can go back to TBK and RVF and say, we need X and the Jackson County Board of Supervisors will accept X if you'll give it to us?
Yes.
One of the things I still don't understand, this has been going on for 13 years and you bought 40,000 for a CNC machine, which you paid off, and you paid off 50,000. 90,000 in 13 years. And now you want to go up to a $200,000 a year payment?
If it was 40,000, it was 400,000.
20,000, I'm sorry.
Let me add one other alternative here for, for the Wes and Jesse and, and Steve. What if, and I, this, I'm just trying to throw out some ideas. What if the revolving loan fund would add money back? In other words, add 100,000 to their $350,000 loan? And that money would go to the Rural Vitality Fund? It's just, I'm throwing stuff against the wall. That's all I'm doing.
So I guess with, when, when Steve respectfully asks for what was that number? Again, I would look back again to my revolving loan board and say, what are you comfortable with or what can we be comfortable with? There's a lot of experience on that board and I respect their opinion. I don't know, Roger, if you could get ahold of the board and, and speak with them and say, is there a number that they're comfortable with, with us taking a third position on the rest of them?
And that's something we would have to discuss too, as a board. You know, try to come up with what that magic number was, would, would, would be.
So I guess maybe this is a question to Wes and, and Jesse and Steve. And that is, are you willing to go back to that and, and make some sort of alternative request? Are you willing to do that?
Yes, we would go back. You know, I, I sent them a copy of the terms that the Jackson County Revolving Loan Fund had. You know, it talked about the 250,000 maximum project size and collateral required. The lead position may be subordinated to a private lender is another indication in there. So I thought perhaps if we could get that down to 250,000, that, that might be acceptable. They said they'd prefer not to, but they want to get the deal done and preserve jobs here. So I'm willing to go back and, and see if getting it down to 250,000 would be possible, would be allowable and, and if they would approve that. And I'd hope to get that done today.
I guess we're looking for the best, best option available, the best scenario for us. I mean, I hope you understand our position here also. It puts the county in a position.
I would, I would say that if you could go back to them and get something in writing to us, as soon as we get it, we'll set up another board meeting and make a decision as to what we're going to do.
And is it safe to say that that proposal would also go to Roger so they can discuss it with your, with the revolving loan board, Roger?
That would be fine. The end result here is that it's a, it's a decision that the supervisors need to make. And I agree with the fact, if you go back to them and ask them what they're willing to do, then we can act on that.
Thank you. Well, I guess Wes and Jess will wait to hear back from you and then we'll proceed from that point.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I just want to, I just wanted to say in closing that this is a very difficult thing to put your arms around and I'm hopeful that something can come of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Jess and Wes.
We'll get back with you then.
Yes, yes.
With Roger?
Yep. That would be great.
Next, Steve.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Okay, is, are the?
Yeah, there should be one.
Okay, we still have Wes and.
Yeah.
I know.
Jack, my, my system blanked out there for a moment. Are you done with our part of the agenda?
Yes, they're going to get back to us after they've talked to the Vitality Fund.
Okay, we were just having some computer problems on our end this morning and all of a sudden my screen went black. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll sign off here. Thanks, Crowder.
Okay, next item on the agenda is with John Kluftwick with the Teamsters Local Union Number 120. And we have Becky Chapin with us and we also have David Dreyer.
Good morning, John.
Good morning.
You're the man of the hour. I'm just here for support if you need it. So I'll let you go ahead and run through your initial proposal on behalf of Teamsters.
Okeydoke. Well, thanks for having me this morning. I'll be brief. Let's see, so for our initial proposals for the upcoming contract, we are proposing a three-year agreement. And under Article 1604, Section B, we are proposing to change the 40 hours of comp time to 80 hours and delete the language that states all accumulated compensatory time must be used by June 30th of each year. And then that will bring us to wages. We are asking for a 5% increase each year and an additional 30 cents per hour added to equipment operator two position. And I believe those are your, your graders. And that is all we have for you, short and sweet.
Current pay for the equipment operator?
What's that?
The current pay for equipment operator?
Let me see, I can tell you. Current pay for equipment operator two would be 24, 25.
Thank you.
And can you tell me what that all includes? Does that include the grader truck driver? What does that all include?
What they're telling me is that is the grader position. And, and the reasoning behind it is it, it gives people some incentive to stay out on that grader. Right now, there's really nothing incentivizing them to stay out there. So they were just looking for, for something along that lines to keep, to keep the grader operators out there doing what they do.
Okay.
And then I also will get you a participation agreement from central states for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is essentially their initial proposal. John, in two weeks, on the 26th, we'll try to go to the top of the hour again at nine o'clock for the county's response. So you can tentatively pencil that in your calendar and we'll follow up with you before then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you much for your time.
Thanks.
See you in a little while.
Thanks, Becky.
This time we're, we're joined by David Dreyer, our county engineer.
Morning, Dave.
Morning.
Morning, everyone.
Three things today. Discussion on five-year road program process for review and approval. And just looking for inputs on how the board wants to handle that. Looking at for a date, either third week in February, whether you want to have an evening meeting or have a special meeting with the board. And there was some discussion about using the room at the city hall.
We have done that, but I don't think that's big enough.
Well, City Hall is not open to the public right now either.
Right, so that's.
So that's the big concern that we have right now is to find a location that we could hold it at that would be open.
Onward center?
Huh?
Onward.
Yeah, we want to, it'd be kind of costly to have it there.
What do they charge?
I, seems to me that for schools, it's $500.
And maybe Sarah can answer that. She's still on. She may not be on, but I was thinking 300 to 350.
Yes, Dave, are you asking that if we need to have a special work session between us to talk about that program? I mean, we talked about doing some changes to it.
I think we need to have a meeting, but then we all.
I mean, apparently you have had some discussions with your department already, so. Yeah, I think we need to have a work session before our.
Oh, absolutely. We need a work session before we have the public forum.
We've had some deterioration that.
So we shouldn't pick the two dates then.
So if you're talking the third week in February, usually you don't, we usually have it on a Thursday night or Tuesday.
Usually Thursday. I think sometimes we had to go to Wednesday because of something else, but.
On my calendar, the 17th is highlighted. Oh, that's.
Wednesday.
Thursday would be the 18th.
Yeah.
So we had it on a Wednesday in 2021. There was a conflict of some kind. That's why we had it on the Wednesday. Oh, okay. I was going to say, that's what it was. It'd be kind of like a city hall.
So would, something like the fairgrounds work for us?
That's a possibility. We have a couple of different rooms there, community rooms. We have the big room. Yeah. They can set up the table and that way everybody can social distance. That would be, that would work fine.
Well, why don't we talk, we'll contact Lanny? Even Boyer Hall would work.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be quite as big.
As long as they can do a slideshow.
Yeah, yeah.
Would Boyer be heated to do it in?
I have no idea.
I was thinking that Boyer had storage capabilities.
Oh, it might. I, I don't know. Because I even seen, said the senior center, but then Luanne said we'd have to go in and sanitize everything and clean everything and, and they're not open either.
The area by the bathrooms there in Pearson, I mean, you could stretch out there.
The bar area.
Yeah, they could use, either the north or south wall. South wall, I guess, would be solid.
We normally have a pretty good turnout.
Well, about 20. We usually have about. We didn't last year. We didn't have 20, but.
I mean, I just think we could social distance either there or let's talk to Lanny about that. Let's set it up for the third week in February. Tentatively finding a place.
Yeah.
Are you thinking a Wednesday or Thursday night?
We normally do it on Thursday. It doesn't matter to me. I'm free both nights at this point. I got, I was in trust here, but that's in the morning. Yeah, it's fine with that. Cancel that.
I was just saying, is that a reason to get out of it? Yeah.
Well, let's plan it either on the 17th or 18th and location to be determined. And then probably.
Are you ready for a work session?
I can be if, I mean.
Maybe like next week or something. Or do you want more?
I want more time than that.
Well, why don't we plan our, our work session the first week in February? And we can, by then.
If we need to make some changes, we can do that.
By then, we should be, hopefully have our budget pretty well done. So we could just maybe have our work session after our board meeting on Tuesday. That would be the second of February.
So if we make a decision to have the public, or the five-year road program meeting, is that a timeframe? If we decide next week, is that a timeframe for publishing? Okay.
Oh, we're.
We have to be prepared for it 20 in advance. That's what I have to check.
Well, that should be suffice, yeah.
Yep, today is the 12th.
So 19th, that gives us, yeah, that's greater than four.
I think we'll try to find a location this week and plan it for the 17th or 18th of February and we'll make the final decision as to the date next week.
You want that in motion?
Yep.
So I'll move.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
I, motion carried.
So what are the options for where we will have this?
We can discuss that. We'll look at some alternatives. We'll try to, we'll try to handle that for you.
We'll try to find out from Lanny if we've got the capability of doing a PowerPoint and, and if it's available. And if she'll turn the heat on.
Very important. All right. 82nd Avenue Bridge. We didn't get paid the latest invoice from the insurance company for that $4,600 invoice. At the same time, we've had IIW working on a plan to repair the bridge and get it back up so that it can carry the previous.
Previous load.
And they have given that concept to Schrader Construction, and they have developed a proposal to do the work of $154,000.
That's to repair back to the way the 19 ton.
Yes. What they would do is not remove the vertical member that is bent out of.
And.
Vertical plane. They will heat it, straighten it, and then insert a steel tube essentially into the frame member then and attach it to the structure so that it will be doing the load carrying of that bridge then. So Schrader wants to start the work as soon as possible because they have downtime now with winter.
Sure.
They don't have projects. This doesn't include, we will need additional monies for IIW to do the design concepts, the plans, and the beyond site. Schrader does the work. That's an additional $25,000. That's not, I mean, that's a lot of money. I understand, but this is a critical bridge. It's a fracture critical bridge. You don't know what you're doing. You could literally create real problems out there with that.
So the proposal that Schrader is putting forward come from Dan or did it come from IIW?
Comes from Dan. And then IIW will need to.
They have to approve it also yet? IIW has to.
IIW developed the concept plans for Schrader too.
Okay, so they come up with a plan. He just come up with the number?
Yes.
But then they come back for the $25,000 and are on site when they're doing the repair.
Exactly.
And that includes their time?
Yes, and they will document everything so that future bridge inspection will know that this work was done on this member. That's why it looks like it does. 10, 15 years down the road, there's a paper trail. It's exactly what was done to this structure, how it was done, and here are the plans for what was done.
And can I ask, have you had a conversation with Alex to say this is probably something not in the normal realm of.
Correct, I hadn't spoken to Alex about it. I'm comfortable with what they proposed essentially, not replacing it, but inserting the structural member within it, which I thought was somewhat elegant solution to the problem.
I guess, what about the company that did the damage and their insurance company? Are they agreeable to this?
We haven't spoken to them yet. We just wanted to give them permission to proceed. We can, we share it with them if they want to have somebody on site when the work is done. I bet you that is certainly welcome too.
Or would it be their position? Do they have the opportunity to say, I want to put this off of bid? Do they have that opportunity?
I wouldn't think so. It's not their bridge. It's ours. I think that, given the urgency, that we want to proceed as soon as possible. They're certainly welcome to have their consultant, their structural engineer review it. They did have a structural engineer visit the bridge. We never did see their report. They never did share it with us, so.
Well, I guess I'm in a position to, okay, to go ahead with this as long as the insurance company's not going to dispute what we're doing here.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I mean, what I said, I don't want to be stuck for $80,000 of this bridge when they're going to dispute it if that's the cost. You know what I mean?
Well, if we wait for their approval, we'll probably miss that window that they didn't want to get this work started. That's the problem.
Okay, so.
Fast insurance companies were. Ultimately, I mean, I don't know.
Or could it be just a phone call?
I have certainly talked to them.
Let's do that. Just give them a heads up.
They say they want to review it and things. I mean, that's my concern.
Okay, so.
Talk to the insurance company.
Okay, so what's your recommendation as far as to proceed with it without? They okay with the insurance company?
Well, in a way. They're going to refuse to.
Then it's a court thing.
It's going to become a legal issue where the county attorney will be involved.
I'd make the motion and go ahead.
And we will go out and call them this morning and discuss it.
Okay, so do we have a stipulation in the motion to get the insurance company's approval or no?
I would just make them aware of what we're doing.
Well, if we want to get it fixed, and we know that we've had delays with insurance companies in the past, and if Dan is able to start working on it soon, I think we do it and then we fight the fight afterwards if there's a problem.
I see Sarah's still on. Is that okay with you, Sarah, fighting the fight later? I would second the motion to go ahead with the repair of the 82nd Avenue Bridge as presented.
Okay, Sarah, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry, I was only half listening.
Oh. We're talking about the 82nd Avenue Bridge. We have the quotes for the repair. $154,000 plus $25,000 to IIW to be there when they're doing the repair work and oversee it. And we're concerned about whether we should get the okay from the insurance company first. As David points out, that's going to delay everything because they're not the quickest river on the ground. And so, or should we go ahead and just have it fixed, and then if there's a problem later, we just have to fight them about it? And that was the motion that Larry made and Mike seconded, that we just proceed and then deal with the insurance company if there are issues.
So the concern is that IIW will be there? Is that where?
No. Concern is that we didn't, the insurance company hasn't okayed having it done. And the.
Oh, because they're going to help pay for it? Is that the issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Was there?
You're familiar with the bridge we're speaking of?
I think so.
The one that the bridge got damaged when they went under and didn't put their boombox or whatever down, and it hit the top of, hit the bridge.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. I don't really receive a contact from Mr. Travis Pickford, who owns property in Nashville Township, the old city of Nashville. Which is not done as well as its partner in Tennessee. Anyways, it is, we probably know where it is. It's east of Baldwin and southeast of 64.
We know where Nashville is, but do you have any plot of the road itself?
I do. Essentially, starting the process, this is a street that is not put through. We don't have any, we see any need for it to be put through. So we don't have objection to vacating that parcel.
I'm talking the top of the papers being north is Mr. Pickford owned the property on the top of that paint block? Yeah. He owns all that?
I believe so, yes.
Them lots, okay. Is there any kind of street leading up to that parcel?
There's a little.
Little 35th Street, I think it is.
Yeah.
And how's the process work? Got to contact all the neighbors and ask if they're.
Yeah.
And I was basically looking for permission to proceed with that in certified letters. There's no need to do a survey. Everything can be described by the plaque, the blocks and lots.
I would move to proceed with the position of vacating 35th Street as presented.
One second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We all.
Um, no, snowstorm is basically over. I've heard good things about the conditions of our gravel roads. Actually, I heard several comments on the conditions of our gravel road. I had a few early, one from a dairy farmer, of course, and probably you and I spoke to address that. I thank you for that. And other than that. But I think they look really good.
No, I won't. Not a surprise. You know, pass it on with.
Yep, that's for sure.
We'll review the proposal from the Teamsters and discuss that.
I did have a call the other day, but I'll have to look up what road it was, and I'll talk to Roger, you about it.
Okay.
There's a driveway that was. A driveway into a field entrance, and it tends to have been taken out and fenced across, but the driveway's still there, and it's raised in a raised position so that when the grader goes by, he hits it with the wing and bend them sideways. Has somebody seen it happen, so?
That's not good.
I'll get in touch with you.
Yeah.
Where is that?
All right.
Okay, are there any citizens that wish to address the board? Okay, next is Sarah Davenport.
Good morning. So I want to kind of give you a heads up on, or heads up, I want to give you an update on where I'm at with replacing Rosie Schwager as the legal assistant in my office. The application period ended, I believe, on the 23rd of December. I did conduct interviews last week, and I tentatively made an offer to one of those candidates. This candidate has three years of legal assistant experience, including in the area of criminal law. This candidate's also familiar with various computer programs, and I believe the best, she is the best candidate for the position. Today, I am requesting that the board approve a pay rate of $21.50 an hour to start with a 50 cent increase at 90 days, provided successful completion of the probationary period. I'm also recommending a 50 cent increase in six months and a final 50 cent increase at one year.
Does that include probation period, evaluation period also?
Right, so I will evaluate her at nine months. I will give her a six-month evaluation, and then I'll start the yearly evaluations.
So 21.50 now, 50 cents in three months, you said, 90 days?
Yep.
And what was the remainder of that equation?
50 cents at six months. And then additional 50 at one year. So my range that you had approved last year was 21 to 25, depending on experience. So I feel this is, based on her experience, that this is appropriate, and then provided, of course, that she continues to improve, that by next year, she'd be at 23 an hour.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the request from the county attorney. Any further discussion?
Yes. Doesn't say on our agenda possible action, so I don't know. Are we looking for action?
I believe the way that my understanding, talking with Becky, is that I do not set the pay rate you do. So in order for me to make an official offer, I have to know that the board's going to support what I'm offering. So I guess that's why I'm here today.
Can we approve it this time? Jack, do you know?
Well, she's our county attorney.
If you're willing to tentatively approve it, my goal is, once I want to make an official written job offer, assuming that this person officially accepts it, I will be back in front of you next Tuesday to officially announce who the employee is. I will make sure that the agenda at that time says possible discussion and action, and then we can take official action on everything if that works.
That works for me.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next we have Marla Quinn.
Good morning, Marla.
Good morning, Marla.
Good morning. How are you guys?
We're fine.
Living the dream.
Oh, that was sarcastic.
I say that too.
I guess Jim is with us also from the sheriff's department. Brent, I guess, has had a hectic morning, so he's running a little behind, but. Did you and Brent find anything on the last revision of the flyer?
I believe the only thing we saw on the revision was where the pieces were taken out, that entire line was taken out.
She put it back in.
Yeah, and that's back on. We're good with it. She did a very good job on readjusting the colors.
We really like the colors. It's easy to read. It gives a lot of good information. I, I think it's, I think it's a goal.
That's really good, yeah.
The only thing I want to say about the color is I want to see how that tan is going to look when it's printed out. It looks beautiful on the screen, but I just, it's different when it prints out. So my person from the printer is going to come this afternoon and show me some swatches.
Okay, okay.
And if I see it's like really bad, I'll let you know. Okay? Is that okay?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
And then, by the time we talk to you next, we'll be able to tell you how many we want printed.
Okay, that was my next question. Like, how is this going to get mailed? Because I learned something this morning, and I apologize. The United States Postal Service activities is not my area of expertise.
Oh, come on. Everything.
Oh, I try, Jack. Anyway, so I learned that the EDDM, that Every Door Direct Mail, which is the cheapest way to go, and it's right now nine and a half by 12 is the size of the postcard. If, let's see here. If you decide to personalize it, then that, it changes the size and cost dramatically. And the final size, the biggest size I could do is six and an eighth by 11 and a half. Anything bigger is going to get into folding.
Did you say six and an eighth?
Six and an eighth, yes, by 11 and a half. So you need to decide, is personalization more important or the size?
The size is more important.
Yeah, it is.
I feel the size is more important too, because it's going to be big and obnoxious, and they're going to see, you know, this local project. It pertains to them. You know?
I love it.
That's my point too. So the size is going to be nine and a half by 12?
Yeah.
Pick that in the mailbox?
Yes.
Not folded?
Nope.
But it's just going to say resident?
Yes.
Okay, if that's the case, we could almost decide on the amount, can't we?
Pretty much. Well, the mailhouse came up with like 10,363 households.
That's okay with me.
You're shaking your head no.
No, I think, no, no, actually, I'm thinking that's the right way to go, because that way.
If we can't personalize them, then I think we have to.
That way, everybody, even the non-registered voters, get it.
Yeah. I, I know, after we got done with you yesterday, we were kind of trying to figure out how we could get the non-registered voters a copy of the flyer, and if we, I really would prefer them being personalized, but if we can't do that, then that's the route to go. So it will.
You can, but I would have to change the design.
Nope, we're not going to do that.
Okay.
That to you. We like what we.
We'd like everything in pink.
What's that?
She said she would like everything in pink.
Me too. I like pink too.
So.
That makes sense. You're going to reach more people.
Well, we're going to blanket the county, basically, but we were talking yesterday, if we could take the 8,000 that she had. Well, we're going to blanket, blanket the county, basically, but we were talking yesterday, if we could take the 8,000 that she had and add personalize them and then take and differentiate the 2,400 and send them out as residents, but that sounds like it's not possible.
Oh, that, I don't know who we would get to do that.
Well, because right now the mail person.
Yep, yep. Okay, so you said about 10,400?
For the amount.
Okay, so do we want some extras?
I guess our, what we talked about is, do we have some extras or we just make copies? And now I'd say you want a few extras, you know.
I'd push it up to.
1,200, 12,000?
We're at 14.
No, we're at.
We're at.
You're at 10,400.
10,400.
Just go up to 11,000.
Okay, let's.
Be more than that.
1,100 of them.
11,000.
11,000, yeah. 11,000 total. And then just have them mailed as you indicated.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And when do we want them to go out? You said it took how long for the public, the printing?
So I would allow two weeks for printing and then the, the mailhouse is going to need some time too. So I'm, I'm going to get on this like this afternoon to get it.
First part of February, I guess. What, what, what does the marketing major say? When should we set it out?
Who's the marketing major?
It should go out the first part of February and, and, and with your, with your calculations, we wouldn't be much after the first of February.
No, not two weeks for printing and, and then the mailer guy takes a week here into the first, second week of February.
Yeah. Okay.
So the first week of February, you want it mailed out?
Yep.
If possible.
If possible, that's, that would be good.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a second, the second week, you know, if it's a week of the eighth, that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
Either the week or the first or the eighth, somewhere in between there would be great.
Okay. I think that's doable.
Okay.
Okay, I'll check that tan. If anything is like really bad, I'll, I'll let you know, but I'll keep plugging along here.
Okay, thanks all a lot for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Bye. Okay, next we have Becky Chapin, human resource.
Good morning, you guys.
Okay. So first thing I'm here to discuss is that we recently advertised an interview for the zoning position, for the zoning administrator, in which last week, a decision was made to make an offer to a candidate. I am happy to let you know the offer was made and she did accept the position, as long as we are willing to allow a 60-day timeframe for her to relocate within the Jackson County. So all is well. I would ask for a motion to approve hiring Christina Tranel effective January 25th, 2021, as the zoning administrator slash GIS coordinator at an annual salary of $62,000.
60 days from January 25th. Or March.
Yeah, she will, she will start effective January 25th. She's just going to live with a friend until she can find an apartment in the county itself.
Oh, the residency requirement. Okay.
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, that's fine.
I would make a motion to approve hiring Christina Tranel as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just thank you, Becky, for your efforts and all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And then I would ask for a motion to approve Christina Tranel a 60-day, or 60 days from January 25th, 2021, to meet the residency requirements living within Jackson County.
So move.
One motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
Okay. Next, per Iowa Code Section 331903, the auditor, treasurer, reporter, sheriff, and county attorney may each appoint, with approval of the board, one or more deputies, assistants, or clerks for whose acts the principal officer is responsible. When an appointment has been approved by the board, the principal officer making the appointment shall issue a written certificate of appointment. Sheriff Brad Kilburg has appointed a chief deputy. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of James Cracker as chief deputy at 85% of the sheriff's salary effective January 2nd, 2021, for a term expiring December 31st of 2024, and authorize the chair to sign said appointment certificates.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
As well with the office of county sheriff new term starting January 2nd, 2021, I also need new appointments approved for his deputies for the sheriff's term expiring December 31st of 2024. I would ask for a motion to approve certificate of appointments and authorize the chair to sign said appointments of certificates for the office of county sheriff as follows. Terry Romley, deputy, Russ Long, deputy, Brandon Beck, deputy, Chad Rader, deputy, Chad Gruber, deputy, Corey Kepman, deputy, Scott Hire, deputy, and Cody Seabrook, deputy, who will remain on the workforce part-time, even though his resignation has been, resignation of full-time has been in effect since December 31st.
Motion to approve.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
And next, we have received notice, notice that Brad Stainer will be resigning his full-time security position with the county effective January 15th, 2021. That's right. That's right. So we have received notice that Brad Stainer will be resigning his full-time security position effective January 15th, 2021. And speaking with Sheriff Kilburg, we feel further discussion needs to be had in order to reevaluate the position before we advertise for a replacement. And wondering if we could ask the board to hold another meeting yet this week? So we can meet the advertising deadline at 11 o'clock on Friday to get it in next week's papers. So we basically just want to table in the action and discussion now.
Are we still under a mandate?
Our court.
We are. I don't know how much physical presence there is from.
The courts.
The courts, yeah.
I guess, have you spoke with our two part-time officers that they'd like to fill in, cover? Or we can have the position covered anyway.
Yeah, actually, Brad Stainer's, he's able and willing to, if one of our two part-timers can't do it, he's also going to try to fill that temporarily.
Luanne, can you look at, oh, we got our calendar here.
And as far as the courts, they're okay with it.
I mean, they may.
It sounds a little quirky, but he submitted a resignation. So he's done. But you ever going to have him come back? We need authorization to have him.
That was a discussion after the fact, whether or not we would have him amend his resignation.
Okay.
His full-time, like Cody did.
Yeah.
So he's resigning his full-time position. It sounds like Brad is willing to stay on to help through the transition if needed.
Yeah, no, I just.
Okay, my question is, would it work for us to have a work session tomorrow at 1:00? According to our supervisor's calendar, I have a Zoom meeting at 10:00 AM and then there's nothing else for, for us until 6:30 that evening. So could we meet in the afternoon tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with that. It will be a Zoom meeting, correct?
It can be.
Yeah, you can Zoom any minute.
Yeah.
Would that work for you?
We're discussing the position or the requirements or maybe the changes in the, in the job description.
For the security guard.
You, that give you enough time?
Yeah.
He's been working on it already.
Okay. I'm on 2:00 tomorrow.
Yep. So can we have that in the form of a motion, please?
I would love to do that. I have a special work session tomorrow at 1:00 PM.
By Zoom.
Yeah. Well, either or.
I'll be here in person and so will Becky.
Could be. I just want to make sure I have that off.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to have a work session tomorrow at 1:00 to discuss the security guard position. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Do we have to have that posted soon then?
Well, we have to have it by, by, by two minutes to, two minutes to one, we have.
I think it's three hours and nine minutes.
No pressure.
So that was actually all that I had for you today. Brent does have some personnel items. I'm going to hang with him. I'm going to turn the camera to him. Probably hear for support if he are going to.
Okay, so next, I'd like to talk about so Scott Hire, one of our new deputies.
Well, before you start, we were with Marla and we approved, and I guess our consensus was we're going to do the door-to-door so that everyone will get a flyer. Rather than try to, try to personalize them, it's going to be impossible because we want every household to receive the information. And so, and we're ordering about 600 extra so that there will be some to be handed out if somebody wants to do that. But they should be printed and off by the, between the first and the eighth of February.
Okay. Okay. Marla's only concern was the tan color. She was going to take it to the printer and see if it.
She wanted to make sure the tan was a nice tan and not.
On the glossy.
And she will let us know if there's any problem.
Yeah, sometimes it'll look different in, in real world than it does.
Yeah, and that's what she said. So.
The action was to personalize it. We'd have to go down to a six and a half by 11, so we would be a little.
Have to redesign the whole thing.
And Marla's quote was, we want to be loud and obnoxious.
Yeah, she says, now, if you want it to be loud and obnoxious, you want to do this. So we had, our decision was to go with the larger size and it would go to every household that's active.
So because I don't know, will they be pre-addressed to a resident of the county or will you plan on stuffing again?
No.
No.
They, yeah, this is it. This is the size. Yes, yeah. We don't have to do anything.
So it's going to stay that size and all they have to do is be certain of the way that it's being done this time?
They'll, they'll, they'll put the mailing labels and all of that done. Okay, now I'll let you go back.
So I was just starting to lead into a discussion about replacing our part-time officer on the sheriff's department. And we've already kind of talked about that Cody Seabrook, he is willing to stay on as a part-time officer, except for he wanted a three-month break, so we've allowed, we've allowed that. And then at those three months, he has to decide whether he is going to work part-time or if he's just, you know, really wants to hang it up and move on. So um, the next thing I'd like to talk about is, I would like to ask for possibly two to three positions to fill those part-time hours. Only because Scott Hire, our part-timer that we moved up to full-time to replace Randy Manning's spot, he was pretty dedicated. He was, I don't know if I'm going to find somebody that is willing to be available and dedicated, as dedicated as what Scott was to fill those hours, because he really, he put a lot of things aside to make that happen and fill those hours. You know, with what we have left, left on our civil service list, I'm not sure other people are going to have the flexibility to fill the hours the way Scott did. So I was hoping to maybe ask for two to three options of part-time people that we could call upon to help fill those hours.
So you're not basically asking for any more hours, you're just looking for more personnel to fill the hours then?
Right, right, right. I just want more options to pick from. So if you look at it from a money standpoint, you're just divvying it up between, instead of one person, you divvy it up to three people that, you know, call the first person, they can't do it. Call the second person, they can't do it. You go to the third person.
Then you call Mike.
So.
Mike is four. He's going to give you, he's going to give you a gun.
And the flashlight, one of those big flashlights.
I guess, does this also go back to current personnel? Can they work some part-time hours? Are you looking off of the list?
Well, yeah, I mean, current personnel can, but then it's overtime, you know what I mean?
So it would be, because the way the schedule was formatted, that that's, there's no extra hours to be.
And what I've already done is I've asked the guys, hey, if somebody wants some time off, see if we could make adjustments to where we could shift forward or backward to make the coverage work. So we're already doing those measures to, you know, try to eliminate as much overtime as we can. However, it's cheaper to pay, it's generally cheaper to pay a part-timer to fill those hours than it is to pay someone full-time and pay overtime or they, you know, then they earn more time to take time off again somewhere else.
I'm guessing these hours are mostly graveyard weekends, da, 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 or?
Yeah, it kind of always depends, you know, it could be a holiday, it could be somebody's got a kid's ballgame or something. It just depends on where that falls in the schedule that now we're feeling like we're kind of short and we want to have somebody that way to, you know.
I definitely think that the more options we have that way, the better, you know, and be restrictive, restrictive to the point where we can't fill it, you know, we want to be lenient to the fact that you don't have the discipline to say.
Yeah.
And we certainly want the coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's what I was proposing. You guys can, you know, discuss that, let me know or whatever, how you feel about it, so.
Well, I, I'm okay with it.
So am I.
I mean, you can proceed and come back with, if you need formal action for it, you have to come back. I suppose we don't have it on the agenda either, but.
Okay.
So he does, he's got personnel items listed.
Oh.
So I think basically what he's looking for today is.
Action on personnel items is there.
Since the board dictates how many deputies he can have, you want to increase the one part-time deputy. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, if we consider Cody one, he's kind of hanging out there yet, but I really, I need help in these first three months where we don't have the full-time position filled yet. I need to help more now than three months down the road, but even three months down the road, I just want to have more options available.
You have to have some flexibility.
Right, just because one person may be at their full-time job and they're like, I can't do it. I'm not taking time off to go work for you part-time, you know what I mean?
I would move to move, look, move forward, but then, option. Second.
With a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Yeah.
My only question I have is, what's the number?
Three.
One to three. One, three?
One to three.
One to three or one to four?
One to three.
Let's, let's, let's stay at three for now. Yeah, I'm figuring Cody kind of has one.
Okay.
And then, you know, if we can add two more, two can get us through hopefully until Cody decides what he wants to do.
Yeah, because Cody's going to be gone for three months and then you're not 100% positive he's going to decide to come back. So then that gives him the option to hire three.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess I watched it, I read the W City Council minutes last week. Are you aware that he accepted a part-time position with them?
Oh, I'm not aware, but.
And I don't know what that entails. I don't know when or why. I just read the minutes, so.
Okay. No, I guess I wasn't aware of that. So yeah, all I knew is that he wanted a little bit of a break and then he, you know, he figured he'd come back in three months. So I guess that, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know any details about it, Brent. I just read the minutes.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe he's just opening that door too. I don't know.
Yeah. I would, I guess he's keeping options open.
Right, right. And, and like Becky and I have discussed, at three months, he's got to either come back and work part-time or we need to end his.
Employment.
Employment here, so.
That's fair enough.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we can't hold it forever.
We need an aye yet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. While we're still on discussion, you know.
Yeah.
You asked for the aye, but we didn't.
Next time you go down for uniforms, take him with you.
That's suffice, so.
Just change the tie.
It comes at you in a purple shirt, you know.
What I was laid out for me.
I hear you. Next order of business for me is I want to, I guess I call it a swearing in of my new hired deputy and then my new chief deputy. So I'm not sure if you guys want to do that like we did our swear and then have them go up there.
We certainly can do that.
Okay.
I think it's a better background right by them two flag. That's up to you guys.
I think so too. Want to have you go first, maybe? Want to have you go first, maybe? So first I'll, I'll give a little background about Scott. Scott Hires is a son of Roger and Lou Ann Hire. Scott was raised in rural Bellevue area in Jackson County. Scott attended Bellevue Community School where he graduated in 2006. He attended the University of Dubuque in which he graduated in 2010 with his Bachelor of Art in Criminal Justice. He was hired in Preston as a part-time officer in 2010. And in 2012 to 2014, he was employed at the Clinton County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer in the jail. Scott remained employed with the Preston Police Department part-time until 2014, when Scott expect, or accepted the full-time position. Scott served the citizens of Preston as the chief for the last six years. In 2015, Scott was hired as a part-time deputy with the Jackson County Sheriff's Office. Where he filled, filled in where needed to keep the office running smoothly. Scott accomplished his career goal of becoming a full-time deputy this month. And he was, uh, this was accomplished by determination and hard work and countless hours dedicated to the sheriff's office. And I personally spoke about that, that, you know, he really, he really dedicated a lot of flexibility to help us out. Um, Scott would not have this opportunity if it was not for the previous sheriff, Russ Kevin, and sheriff, new sheriff Brent Kilburn collaborating to make this appointment a smooth transition and bring him on board. Um, the two sheriffs worked hand in hand in the process of hiring Scott to make sure that office was up to staff in January when we muted him as of the first, so. So now I will read, uh, his appointment. And Scott, just repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Scott Hire.
I, Scott Hire.
Having been appointed a deputy sheriff of Jackson County.
I've been appointed deputy sheriff of Jackson County.
Under Brent Kilburn, sheriff of said county.
Under Brent Kilburn, sheriff of this county.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of this United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and partially.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff as now or hereafter required by law.
Discharge.
All the duties.
All the duties, deputy sheriff.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or as.
Hereafter.
Hereafter.
Required by law. Sorry, I'm probably reading a little too much. So, all right, Mom, if you want to paint this badge on. Ah, go ahead and poke it. Nothing much a little bit.
You get a mom and dad?
Yeah.
You can take your mask off. You don't want that on for the picture.
Could we get a sheriff deputy?
Oh, okay.
Yep, the flag.
Congratulations, welcome.
It's a pleasure.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next is my chief deputy. James Cracker joins the Jackson County Sheriff's Office in January 2021 as chief deputy. He comes to Iowa after serving Grand County, Colorado in several capacities for 30 years. He began as part of the Grand County Search and Rescue to the Grand County Sheriff's Office. After completing the academy, he worked for the Grand County Sheriff's Department, the majority of which he was contracted in Granby. He was hired on with the Granby Police Department with the initial agreement that he would help develop the department from its birth, ultimately serving as chief of police, as chief of the Granby Police Department. James and his wife Renee have been homeowners in Bellevue, Iowa since 2018. Okay, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, James Cracker.
I, James Cracker.
Having been appointed a chief deputy of Jackson County under Brent Kilburn.
Having been appointed chief deputy, Jackson County under sheriff Brent Kilburn.
Sheriff of said county.
Sheriff of Jackson County.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of chief deputy.
I will discharge all the duties as chief deputy.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Very good. Let's get you a quick bow. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get, Brent, I'll get these signed and I'll take them Becky's and then you can pick them up there. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Lisa Smith.
All right. I'm boring.
You've got a page here too. You remember, we're falling behind.
The 29th motion to approve the minutes of the January 4th, 2021 board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
Don't move.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept place on file and authorize the chair signature on the county recorder's report fees collected. For the month of December 2020, an amount of $55,077.34.
So move. I would second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carried.
Motion is needed to update the ownership on a Class C liquor license without door service and Sunday sales. Macocata Country Club at 17961 33rd Street here in Macocata, with the license expiring on March 5th, 2021.
Hope to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the Macocata Country Club, uh, Class C liquor license. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve the renewable Class C liquor license without our service and Sunday sales to Obies at 3610 173rd Avenue. In Macocata, effective March 1st, 2021 through February 28th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I would second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Class C liquor license for Obies and Sunday sales. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion to approve resolution number 783-01-12-2021. Which sets out the procedure if a board of supervisors wishes to adopt a construction evaluation resolution or master matrix relating to the construction of a confinement seeming operation structure as recorded in resolution book four, page 314 as presented. This is, this is an annual thing that we have to do and then we forward it on to the state.
Yeah, I just want to add that, that the state sets the guidelines for that. And I mean, it's been talked about for several years that it needs to be revisited. But again, like Lisa said, we have that formality that we do this every year and there is a master matrix in place.
Yes, there is.
They have to follow.
For a long time.
Before the regulations that are required. I would move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 784-01-12-2021. To abate the taxes on a mobile home owned by Lydia Faust according to section 435.25 of the Code of Iowa as recorded in resolution book four, page 315.
Motion to approve.
I would second. It's been moved and seconded to abate the taxes on a mobile home owned by Lydia Faust. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, now we go to Lou Ann Cookie.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think it's still working.
Yeah.
Not too bad. Calendar for this week. This afternoon at four o'clock is a Coconut River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Larry. Wednesday, January 13th at 10:00 a.m. is an early childhood Iowa, zero to five and 60 minutes meeting by Zoom for Jack. And, um, after that will be our one o'clock work session on the security guard position that we just talked about. And at 6:30 tomorrow evening is Jackson County Municipal League, which will be in St. Denatus or by GoToMeeting and that's for Mike. Also tomorrow at 6:30 is the Jackson County EMS Advisory Council meeting. And I think that's also by Zoom.
Except for, for all of us, or? Whoever wants to attend, yes, it's public media. It's not really a public entity, but we certainly have an interest in it.
Okay.
I will not be available.
Yeah, I, I told Mike I'd go, but you can come too, or zoom in also.
Thursday, January 14th at 7:30 a.m. is hometown pride meeting in Bellevue for Mike.
Oh.
Might be by Zoom.
May I ask, was there a time change to that or is that?
Is it seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Normally at seven.
At seven, okay.
So if you think it's still at seven, correct?
I think it still is seven.
Okay.
I will check on it.
I'll be there anyway.
Have another cup of coffee maybe?
Yeah.
10:00 a.m. on Wednesday is the Iowa DHS Council meeting, and that will also be by Zoom for Jack. At 2:30 on Thursday is a Mississippi Valley workforce training, um, that is set to be in person in West Burlington.
Right.
For Jack. And at 4:00 p.m. that afternoon is the local emergency planning committee conference call for everyone. Friday, January 15th at 2:00 p.m. is a special governing board meeting with the state legislators. That's by Zoom and it's for Jack. Monday, January 18th at 6:00 p.m. is Together We Build meeting by Zoom for Jack. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January 19th at 9:00 a.m. That, right after that meeting at 11 o'clock will be the Green Island Drainage District's annual meeting downstairs in the court in the community room. At 6:00 o'clock that night will be Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting by Zoom for Jack and the Conservation Board meeting by Zoom for Larry. I guess the only other bit of business I have today is to officially set the meeting date for the Green Island Drainage District for, um, January 19th at 11:00 a.m.
Is that also being offered by Zoom?
Downstairs. Well, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have an option for them to, I don't know if it's going to be Zoom or GoToMeeting, I think. It'll be Zoom. It'll be right after this meeting, so.
But they have an option to come into the meeting also.
They do.
So we'll probably meet downstairs.
I reserved the community room, so as many as want to come in.
So can we take that computer down for that?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll figure out, we'll figure that part out.
And you can take your personal.
Yeah, yeah, might work down there before.
So I'm wishing to set that meeting dates for the 19th.
Need a motion to approve the meeting date of next, um, week.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
That was the discussion on board business. That was that one here.
Yeah.
Does she have something else?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, it says, uh, next item is a board work session, um, on the budget. Are we, do we have anybody coming in or?
We do not have anybody scheduled.
Okay, um, we still have several that haven't been here. Um, I wonder how close the sheriff's department is and, um, yeah, we did next door. We haven't done Marty yet.
I guess Marty and Becky tentatively down for next week.
Okay.
But I don't think Becky's will take very long.
Again, if we have to have a special session for that, I don't have a problem. We don't.
I was just wondering.
We just need to get through it.
I was just, I was just wondering if one of them might be ready tomorrow afternoon after our meeting with Brent.
I guess I would wonder if Marty's ready to begin.
We can put him on anytime.
So we have Marty, sheriff.
Well, why don't we put Marty down tomorrow afternoon at two, after we're done? I would think an hour would be.
Because he's off.
He's off at two. That's why, that we, right. So unless we do him first, I mean, I can include it on the agenda for the work session tomorrow. We can just do him first.
We certainly can't put him at one o'clock and then have our work session with him. Or do we make a motion for that or a certain time or?
We just said we were going to have a work session at one o'clock.
Well, let's have Marty at one and then we'll have, um, Brent at like 1:30.
So we're having a work session for budget purposes and, yeah.
And, uh, security guard.
Whatever comes first is first, I guess, where we have a work session.
We arrange a schedule that you want once for inside the work session, because everything's on the agenda, which it's going to be.
Well, I would include a work session on the budget for maintenance and then, and then the work session with the, uh, security guard, um, with the sheriff.
Sounds good to me. We don't really have a budget work session now.
No.
That we need to discuss anything in the budget that you're concerned about or.
You don't put a work session on the budget.
Yeah. I have not really had a chance to go through the departments that come through. I took it home with me, but they're sat for a week and I didn't.
Well, I've looked at most of it, um, uh, but I, I really, I mean, the important thing is to hear from those that haven't. And then obviously to get some, get, get some, uh, figures as far as tax dollars and so.
Maybe next week we can, if we can get, you know, Marty tomorrow, Becky won't take, I, I mean, Becky kind of made note here that day that she didn't have really any changes. So you're dwindling down to, um, you can always finish them tomorrow.
Well, well, the sheriff's department.
And we really haven't had mental health yet either.
No. No.
Sheriff's department's going to take a while, I think. I mean, there's. Well, yeah, I guess I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what all these concerns are. Question might be, but.
Well, it depends when he brings in too. Maybe they have something worked out.
Oh, oh, oh. The other thing is, um, I talked to Brent last night and, um, there's a possibility that we will go see a jail next Monday. Um, uh, and maybe two. Um.
Do we get to take the county jet?
Well, I wondered if we'd take the transport van.
Oh.
Who gets to sit in the back?
Well, I don't know what's in, aren't there chairs in the back?
Oh, there's a little bit. Do you know where we're going, by the way?
North.
Crestville? I mean, you're talking Crestville up that way again?
I think that's what he said. Do you want to call him?
That's what John was talking about yesterday.
Oh, I'll do it. Okay, I got it. Line's busy.
Couple hours.
Take the cruiser and have the lights on and get there in half the time.
That's what I'd like to look at, I'd like to look at that, no, but I think you could swing by Delaware County on the way to Crestville.
Well, there's two places up there that he wants to go, is there a Howard County?
Yeah.
Howard and then there's another one. And there's, he said there was one and then the other one is like 45 minutes. One direction or the other.
No.
No, it was not Delaware County, he wants to see, he wants to see those that are in operation at the present time. Could be, that might be.
Yeah, that's north of.
Yeah, Al Mckee and Wakan, yeah.
Yeah, Crestville will be up there by Wakan.
They're an hour or two apart. Two and a quarter hours to Wakan, it's another two hours to Crestville.
Well, he said they were 45 minutes apart, is what he said last night when I talked to him. It's ringing.
No.
Who am I speaking with? Is, is Brent back over there? Could I please talk to him, please? Jack Willie.
Hey Jack, I'm going to send it to his office, he'll grab you in there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You too.
Yeah.
Did you restart it?
I haven't. Mine's on. Well, it switched now, it's got Jack on before, it still had the two guys standing up there.
I have you.
Yeah.
Yeah, none of mine's moving except for mine.
I got, I got Lisa and me and Mike and Larry and Karen.
Kelly and Karen.
And Kelly.
I've got everybody up.
With their snowmen there.
Yeah.
Brent?
Yeah.
I was just talking to the board about the road trip next Monday. Um, and I, is it Al Mckee and Howard County?
Let me verify that, I think that's correct.
Oh, they said what are the towns?
Okay, all right.
Too many different notebooks going on, too many different topics. Yeah, one is Howard County, which is like Preston, Iowa.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The other is Al Mckee County. And to be honest with you, I'd have to log in to see what, what town that, that I just, you know.
Walk on.
Yeah, that sounds right, probably.
Yeah, Luanne's, she's got a lot of information about that area.
Yeah.
Yep. So I think if I got this right, I think we're going to start in Al Mckee County, so I told me to be up there about mid-morning, late morning. We'd spend an hour or two there, maybe grab some lunch on the way over to Howard County, which is about 45 minutes away. And then, you know, be there for an hour or two, if we have time to go to the second one. Be there Thursday also, and then, you know, head back after that.
Okay, so how are we going to travel, are we going together, are we going to are we going to take, take the transport van from Clinton County or?
Well, I was thinking we'd take the transport van, but however, I was thinking that was just kind of an open van on the inside, but it's actually got three cages, so we can, three cages.
Well, that's when, that's when Mike wants his uniform, so he can set up front.
I get to be the bad guy, he's going to be the uniform guy.
I guess, so Jack, who's all invited to this, you know, when we met with Farm Bill and we talked about viewing some of these, I actually, the calls I had after that was wondering to let them know when they were, we were going to do that, some were interested in going along, is that something that?
I don't know about that.
Drive.
Well, yeah, they wouldn't.
Well.
Or even, I don't know.
Jack, are we on, are we on Zoom yet while we're talking?
Yeah, yeah, we are.
Yeah, I guess I was just, if we were going to do that, I would, I would feel like I need to prep those other jails for, you know, if citizens are just going to show up, whereas you guys are board of supervisors, you know what I mean? They probably understand that, you know.
Well, was, were they wanting to go to Delaware County?
Basically, they wanted to see the setup up at Delaware.
Yeah.
So they could probably, we could probably set something up even if we wanted to go up.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we could probably do that a different day or something.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that was, because we said it was very similar to what we were having and John was the construction manager up there, just as he's going to be our construction manager. So I think their, their interest was more in seeing Delaware County rather than.
The layout.
The layout in the other counties, but I guess we can discuss this further tomorrow when you're here.
Okay.
And incidentally, you've been, you've been booted, you're at 1:30 instead of 1:00.
Okay.
Because we're going to have Marty's maintenance budget meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
At one. So 1:30 and we'll finalize the plans, but if we have to, we have to make a motion to go on a road tour. So we'll do that for next Monday.
Yeah, yep, if you can go, I think we can go ahead and plan that, being as I've talked to both of those counties, I've gotten ahold of them and they're at least expecting it. I told Howard County that, you know, we'd like to get the second one in to get a different, you know, different perspective if we could, since we're only one county away, we thought we'd run over to them and see that before we came home.
Okay, so, thank you much.
Yep, okay. Thanks.
Yep, bye. So. Can we have a motion to go on a road tour next Monday, the 18th? And we'll finalize the times and how, how we're going to get where tomorrow when we meet with Brent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Is there any other business to come before the meeting today? I would just say that the Iowa Mississippi Valley did have a monitoring last week from the state and I think federal also. It went very well, there were a couple things that they said that we needed to address. This was the first one that was done in the state and they, they were very complimentary to our progress and how we've delved right in and got things done and got things organized, so we'll get the, we're supposed to get the report from them around the 20th of February, they said it would take about three to four weeks to get the report back, but they really were very complimentary to how everything went and the cooperation they had from our providers of service.
That's good news, we are leader of the pack.
Yep, we are.
I guess a question or comment, I did see an email that was rather refreshing that the Southeast community or whatever.
Oh, yes.
withdrew their.
Yes.
Legal claim.
Yes, I, I personally think that what happened was when they saw this book and there were this many pages of documentation of how we had handled everything. And theirs, they're started here. And this is how many pages they had to document why they were filing the suit. And I said, I really think what happened is when Southeast Community College saw, their lawyers saw what we had, they said, let's for, let's forget this, so we didn't have to have our day in court and everything. Yes, yes, absolutely. It was a sigh of relief from, from everybody, but is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting for today, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.